Uh, it looks like four of us now. So I think we'll go ahead and get the meeting started here at six thirty-three tonight. Uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, thank you again, uh, just kind of formally for switching to a virtual meeting tonight. Uh, instead of uh, kind of our hybrid normal format, uh, like we were talking about the weather. Uh, was making us think that we wouldn't be able to do this in person and because we canceled it, uh, we got better weather. Um, so with that, uh, Kelly, we do roll.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Crosby.
Here.
Commissioner Lee Weinberg.
Here.
Commissioner Vincent. I see Commissioner Vincent. Okay. She waved here. Um, and just to let you know, Commissioner Pullen is excused. She had a um, a family thing that she had to deal with, and so she had already corresponded with Darren and I. And then Chair Wegener.
Here. All right, thank you, uh, Kelly. Uh, before we get formally started, I am hoping that you all can just indulge me real quickly. Um, with an additional item to the agenda, uh, tonight is my first night as chair. Uh, which means that it is first, uh, Commissioner Crosby's, uh, first night, uh, getting to use the commissioner. Uh, title again instead of chair, and so I just wanted to take a moment, uh, to formally thank him. Um, for all his many, uh, decades, uh, as chair, uh, of this commission. Um, Kelly, myself, and I think a few others at City Hall, uh, did some digging through memory lane. Uh, the past few weeks and, uh, just wanted to share a couple, a couple little items that we found. Um, just some little history here. Uh, so Commissioner Crosby, uh, first, uh, got acquainted with, uh, the Planning Commission as an advisor, uh, back in August of nineteen ninety-four. Um, so for context, um, I was seven at that time and, um, uh, the, I mean, he was first, um, appointed to the, um, Planning Commission in May of nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, at that time Sandy's population was five thousand ninety-one. Um, today it's almost thirteen thousand, so, uh, it has more than doubled in that time. Um, he was first elected chair on April twenty-second of two thousand and two. At that point Sandy's population was sixty-six hundred, uh, so again, pretty much doubled in his time as chair. Um, I found this, uh, kind of funny that his first public hearing. Uh, file number zero-two-one-six was the request for adoption of, uh, uh, chapter seventeen dot one oh-two, which was regulating trees and amendments of different sections. Um, and so there were lots of familiar names. Uh, it's funny how many familiar names, uh, that we hear. I saw, uh, Commissioner Walker's names in the minutes. Uh, Tracy Brown was in there, uh, of course Commissioner Crosby was in there, uh, lots and lots of familiar names. But they had two and a half hours of discussion on this. Uh, this was the second or third time that they had heard this file and they sent it back to staff. Uh, and I believe it came up another three or four more times in the months afterwards before finally getting adopted. Um, each of these meetings had, um, at least ten, if not more folks in attendance. He signed the guest logs at those times, uh, which was interesting to see. Um, the first development that I found, uh, that Chair Crosby, uh, kind of presided over. Was in December of two thousand and two, which was the Double Creek Departments. Um, which was a, it did a three-three vote. Um, and that meeting had twenty-two folks in attendance. Uh, his first subdivision, uh, appeared to be the Barla Trail Subdivision, uh, when he was on council. Um, and let's see here, in that time, um, lots of things that happened, including two thousand and eight. Uh, recommendation of city style to city council, um. Let's see, the Sandy Cinema opened the same year that he was elected chair. Uh, fun fact, in nineteen ninety-seven was the year that, uh, two things happened. One, the Oregon Trail School District was organized. So he was chair for and on the Planning Commission for the entire time Oregon Trail has existed as a school district. And that is the same year that the Comprehensive Plan was adopted. So he has been on the Planning Commission for the entire, uh, nearly twenty-seven year length of the last, uh, Comprehensive Plan. So, um, we are super happy that you are still with us and still able to give us that experience, at least I am. Um, and just a big thank you for all the work, uh, that you've done, um. To say that there are big shoes to fill would be, um, an understatement. So, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, uh, that was, that was funny. I've had people often ask me, when, when did I start on the Planning Commission? And I literally did not know, but now I do. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right, uh, with that, uh, we'll move into our approval of, uh, minutes. If everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting, um, we'll call if there's any changes or edits or additions that are needed. Um, and hearing and seeing none, we will consider those approved. Uh, moving on to requests from Laura here, I don't think we have anybody attendance, but in case there's anybody secretly watching. Uh, we now welcome your comments. Uh, if you're fist-picked online, go ahead and click that raised hand button, letting us know that you're here and would like to be recognized. If you're joining via phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Kelly, are you seeing the same nobody I'm seeing?
Yeah, you don't have any attendees currently.
Excellent. Um, then let's move on to, uh, your director's report.
Yeah, I di- I didn't have much. I was, I was hoping to have a update on the moratorium and the status with DQ and EPA. Um, I don't have anything for you yet. I've been told it's going to be in the next few weeks, so I'm very hopeful that, um, either next time we meet in April or before then, I can send something via email. Um, to kind of let you all know what's going on, um, or may, if you want, I could do both. I could send an email, kind of giving you all a, uh, quick update and then kind of answering any questions at the following meeting if you prefer that. And then the only other thing I put on there for now was just when our next meeting would be. Uh, Patrick and I will be working on some code revisions as we discussed in November. And we hope to have the first set of those, you know, some of those revisions for you to look at in a work session.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councillor Meaton, did you have anything to share tonight?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Sorry, Councillor Meaton.
Well, thanks Chair, um. I don't think there's anything planning commission wise, well, maybe one. At, um, the City Council last week, we gave the go-ahead for the city manager to begin negotiating the price for, uh, parking lot that was for sale. And the address, maybe Kelly, you can, um, remember it. I don't remember. It's, um, right, right, um, before you get to the the blue building, um, on the right-hand side, it's about a fifty space parking area, um, that's for sale. So we, we gave the permission for Tyler to enter into negotiations to execute the contract on that. So, um, that would, would buy the city some parking that we so much need in the downtown area. Um, other than that, I don't think there's anything, anything new that, that came about that would impact the Planning Commission or, or land use development.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, any other commissioners, any other, uh, items to bring up, discuss, questions from anybody? Uh, I do have one note for Kelly and probably, uh, Vice Chair Weinberg. If we do have a meeting in May, uh, I will probably be absent for it. Uh, as I will be bobbing around the middle of the ocean.
And I did, I did want to know for you, uh, note for you Chair, that, uh, Commissioner Ramsar has joined the meeting as well. And for Rebecca for taking the minutes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
I know that I will not be here for the, um, the May meeting as, as far as I know. I think I'm flying home from Washington DC that evening.
Yeah, just for, just for all of you, um, at this point, I don't have anything for a May meeting. Um, so one, one thing to keep in mind, I probably should have put this on the agenda as well. So you, you will have an invite for a work session on April first, which will be for the block three of the Comprehensive Plan. So you will have an invite for that evening, and then I believe you'll have another invite in early May to start looking over the Comprehensive Plan document itself. So you'll, you'll, even though there might be a few less Planning Commission meetings over the next few months, there will be a few invites coming from the Deputy City Manager for work sessions.
All right, and, uh, speaking of Comprehensive Plan, let's move on uh, to our next item of business, which is going to be, um, the type two, or excuse me, type four, uh, Comprehensive Plan Review. We'll go ahead and open that, uh, public hearing. Let's see, file number twenty-three zero forty-nine at uh, six forty-three, uh, PM. And we'll start with any abstentions from the hearing body. Hearing see none, any, um, uh, conflicts of interest. Hearing see none. Uh, I think Kelly, we'll go to you for the staff report.
Yeah, I'm just going to provide a brief kind of overview of where we're at and then, and turn it over to uh, Beth and Nicole, both, both with the Eco Northwest, which is a consultant that has been putting together the EOA and HCA for the city. Um, so just to remind everybody, we've been working on this project for a few years at this point, um, the Comprehensive Plan. One component of the Comprehensive Plan was to update our EOA and, uh, HCA. Those were last adopted in two thousand and fifteen. And so we're, we're kind of on, we're kind of on pace for revising and adopting new documents. We thought it would be a good opportunity to do that concurrently with the Comprehensive Plan. And the main reason is to kind of give a factual basis for then creating some of the goals and policies that you'll be reviewing on April first. Uh, with block three of the Conference Plan, so this is kind of, these are kind of the background reports that then will help guide development in the future in Sandy. The other important thing I did want to note is that with the adoption of House Bill two thousand and three, um, I think it was in the legis- one of the legislative sessions, I believe, in either two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one. Sometime deep in COVID is what I remember. Um, that House Bill requires that every six years for cities within metro areas, they have to adopt a new HCA. And every eight years, like for cities like Sandy, uh, a new HCA has to be adopted, so we're on pace for that. We have to have ours adopted by two thousand and twenty-five to meet the statutory requirements of House Bill two thousand and three. And then we'll be following up the housing capacity analysis with a new analysis that was created with House Bill two thousand and three called a HPS or Housing Production Strategy. And that will be a strategy on how to produce more housing in Sandy and how to produce, um, you know, the kinds of housing that the state is wanting to be produced in local jurisdictions. So the HPS work will be a follow-up to the HCA and it's, it's a brand-new thing for most cities. Um, of course Sandy's never done one. Um, and then our requirement statutorily on that is to adopt our HPS by two thousand and twenty-six. And Rebecca, who's taking the minutes tonight, she did a fantastic job of getting the city a grant for about fifty thousand dollars. And then the City Council also set aside around twenty thousand to do the HPS work. So we'll, we'll be kicking off that in the next few months. Um, Eco Northwest will also be participating and assisting us with moving us through the HPS. And helping us fulfill our, uh, statutory guidelines by adoption of both the HCA and then eventually the APS, HPS as well. Um, and then the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Beth is that there's been opportunities for both the Planning Commission and the City Council, and then even more recently for the Economic Development Advisory Board to all review the HCA and EOA and give feedback to both the consultants and myself in different work sessions. And so we've taken that feedback that we've received and it's helped formalize the documents that are before you tonight. The documents before you tonight, you're giving a recommendation on to to City Council and that hearing with City Council will be in April as well. I think actually on April first. Um, as well. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Beth.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. So what I'd like to do is walk through a presentation about the, um, economic opportunities analysis and the housing capacity analysis. Some of this will look familiar to you because we've talked about it, um, in, uh, in December. Um, we expanded on some of the information we're bringing to you about the housing capacity analysis, especially because we had staff, uh, not staff, we had, uh, council and Planning Commission questions about it. So we're trying to walk through it in a little more detail. Uh, if you have questions as we go along, um, uh, Chair, is it okay if we take questions as we go along? Okay. All right, you're nodding, so.
Yes, absolutely. If it works for you.
Okay, um, then, uh, here we go. So the process is one that you're familiar with. Um, this has been, uh, as, uh, Kelly mentioned, really, um, uh, combined with the Comprehensive Plan Update Process. And that makes a lot of sense because these documents are, um, uh, essentially appendices to your Comprehensive Plan. They provide your factual basis for your Comprehensive Plan policies and then later, if you have to make findings off of those policies. Um, so here we are, we've got these background reports, the housing capacity analysis, the, uh, nope, nope, housing. Yes, the housing capacity analysis, I'm sorry, I was confusing myself, and the economic opportunities analysis. And those lead to the goals and policies that we'll be talking about, um, on April first. So the economic opportunities analysis, uh, we started, uh, well, started partially collecting background data, but then also worked very closely with your consultant to help develop your economic development strategy to make sure that the assumptions we are making about future growth were consistent with, uh, some of the, uh, aspirations for economic development in Sandy. So a lot of this is, uh, crosses over to that pretty tightly. So cities do an economic opportunities analysis and EOA because there's legal requirements. So Oregon's Goal Nine requires that cities periodically look at whether they have enough land to accommodate employment growth. Um, understanding your existing conditions and then forecasting your future conditions. So, um, as I said, this dovetails with the Economic Development Strategic Plan. This provided factual information for consideration in development of that plan. Of course, land use policy, so your Comprehensive Plan policies, that's consistent with what we're finding in here. And then when you're doing economic development, of course, an awful lot of what you want to do is coordination with your economic development stakeholders, your businesses, um, that kind of thing. Kelly may be able to speak to it a little bit, but we had, uh, an Economic Development Advisory Committee who helped us, uh, as we were thinking through the EOA and, um, forecasting, uh, can, uh, future growth. Um, and I, I don't remember honestly, Kelly, who was on that advisory committee. Cause it seems like it was twenty or thirty years ago, even though it was just about a year, year and a half ago. Um, but, uh, it was, uh, people from within your community who do economic development. And of course David Snyder was heavily involved in that. We're planning for long-term growth, um, uh, over the next twenty years. And answering the question, does Sandy have enough land to accommodate expected commercial and industrial growth? So that implies that we start with the buildable lands inventory. So for the employment piece, we started with your land that was owned for commercial, for industrial and then village commercial. You can tell that you don't have a whole lot of land um, within the city, um, within the urban growth boundary, really. That is vacant and partially vacant and unconstrained, um, by things like steep slopes, um, uh, uh, riparian areas, um, your BPA easement. Um, but this map is showing your vacant, your unconstrained, commercial and industrial land. Uh, I think on the next slide we'll have number of acres, um, in, uh, in each category. So Sandy has essentially a hundred and ninety-one buildable, commercial and industrial, uh, acres that are vacant and unconstrained. About a hundred and thirty-two are commercial, um, fifty-four are industrial, and you've just got six that are village commercial. So before I go on, do you have any questions about the buildable lands inventory? This is something that we worked extensively with Kelly and other staff on to make sure that we are accounting for information correctly and looking at the correct types of, uh, constraints. All right, I'm not seeing any questions, so I'll go ahead. Um, so of course we then took a good look at, um, existing conditions in Sandy. And this and a few of the other slides are some of the, um, many statistics that we considered um, in the EOA, uh, and we're not presenting all that many of those, um, pieces of information. But they're in that document that's, uh, around a hundred pages or so. So we started with covered employment, um, in Sandy, looking at what industries had the most employment. Um, and so we found, of course, that retail trade, recreation, accommodations and food services, government, healthcare and socialist, uh, services. Um, all your other commercial services essentially, and then manufacturing and retail trade. These are, these are your, your larger sectors. You can see here we have an average city wage of about thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, that's below Clackamas County's, um, average wage of around, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars. And then for each of the industries, we've indicated where the average wage is. So for instance, retail trade, um, uh, because you've got so much retail trade in your community, that's about your average city wage. Looking at government, um, or manufacturing and wholesale trade, their average wages are a lot closer to the county average wages. And we looked at this information from two thousand and nineteen, um, pre-COVID on purpose. It's just now, uh, a month or two ago that twenty-twenty-two data was available. Um, so the best available data, when we looked at this originally, um, was, uh, well, we could have used twenty-twenty and, and that, that's not good data. Um, because wild things happened in twenty-twenty, so we decided to use two thousand and nineteen. And so then we took that estimate of total jobs in Sandy, of which there were about five thousand one hundred and fourteen in twenty nineteen. And we said, okay, how might, uh, the city grow between twenty-twenty-three and forty-three? Um, and, uh, we looked at different, uh, ways, um, to, uh, to look at growth. So we looked at what are two, called two safe harbors, which are legal ways that the city can use to forecast growth that if they're challenged in court, the city will win on the challenge as long as the safe harbors are used correctly. So one of the safe harbors is to assume that, uh, Sandy's employment would grow at the regional employment growth, growth rate. So that includes Clackamas County of one point six-two percent. And that would result in about two thousand new employees. We could look at how Sandy grew between two thousand, uh, eight and two thousand and nineteen. Those years were chosen because, uh, two thousand and eight was before the, um, we lost a lot of jobs in the, uh, Great Recession. And two thousand and nineteen is the base year we're using. And that would result in about, um, forty-eight hundred, uh, sorry, twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred new employees in Sandy. Or we could fo- forecast that your, uh, employment would grow at the same rate as your population, um, which results in a little more than twenty-five hundred employees. Um, we chose employment growing at about the same, uh, pace as population in part because of the types of employment that you have in your community. So much of it is, uh, community-based and related to tourism. Um, so we settled, uh, on that growth rate in discussion with our advisory committee, um, and then also, uh, city staff. And then we have to turn those, uh, new jobs into land demand. Um, and I won't belabor this unless anybody has a question. Um, government employment, we set off to the side um, and did not forecast land demand for because government employment, a lot of that is in school districts. Um, some in, uh, uh, the, uh, local government, that kind of thing. And need for land for employment, um, for, uh, government is just different. Um, like you have big sites for schools, um, uh, for instance, that are not consistent with the kind of land that you need for industrial or commercial uses. Um, so in the end, we forecast growth, uh, of about twenty-five hundred new employees who would need about a hundred and fifty-four acres of land. And I can step through how we got from point A to point B, um, if anybody is really actually interested. Um, but we looked at, um, typical, um, employment densities that you see in communities like Sandy. Okay, so then answering the question, does Sandy have enough land to accommodate expected growth? Um, your land supply is fifty-four acres for industrial and a hundred and forty-two for commercial. Your land demand, um, is these two numbers. Essentially, you have a small deficit of land for industrial. It's not really surprising, um, uh, given how little land you have in your, uh, uh, in your urban growth boundary for industrial, and you've got a surplus of land for commercial. Um, you don't have to address the, uh, industrial land deficit. Um, uh, it's different than if you had a housing land deficit. Um, the city can choose to, uh, accommodate that deficit some other way, um, like rezoning land for industrial uses. Or, um, looking at policies that allow for more, uh, uh, land-efficient industrial development. Honestly, I would never consider a nine-acre, um, UGB expansion for industrial. Urban growth boundary expansions are very expensive. Um, and you probably wouldn't get land in the place that you wanted it to be for industrial in any case. So that becomes a small economic development, um, consideration, um, for the, uh, city to work through. Before I go, uh, I've got a little bit more, um, do you have any questions about where we are there? I'm hoping you can't hear the, uh, vacuum cleaner in the, in the background. That's good.
Uh, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, using the population growth rate to project the number of jobs. Um, your, your slide indicated that that is not a safe harbor, but I assume it's still a defensible.
No, that is a safe harbor. It's safe harbor number two.
Oh, okay, it's off, uh, everybody's picture is hiding it.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Um, uh, the historical employment growth isn't a, a safe harbor. Um, but if we'd chosen to use that, that's easy enough to justify as well. We've got, um, substantial evidence for that. So.
Thank you.
Certainly. Are there any other questions before I go on to a little more discussion about, um, economic opportunities?
Beth, I, I was going to point out one thing on that same slide that now that you brought it up. The, the other thing when we were talking, um, internally too, and then with the technical advisory committee that I remember is the amount of employees was such a substantial, I mean, such an insignificant amount difference between the non-safe harbor approach in the middle and the safe harbor approach to the right. What is that like, thirty-eight employees? We just didn't feel like it was worth investing more time and energy on justifying it rather than just picking the safe harbor. I just wanted to bring that up.
I mean, that's
for thirty-eight employees.
That's a fair point. Um, history shows that, that, uh, if Sandy continues as it has, after you get out of the moratorium, um, you're likely to grow, um, at, at about that rate.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we needed to think about, um, also the types of sites that, um, employers might need, um, in order to locate in, in Sandy to make sure that we had some understanding of that, um, and this can also lead to specific things a city may want to do to support economic development. So when we looked at industrial, um, uh, most of your, your target industries, which are industries that you think, um, either are present in Sandy and can grow, or ones that you've identified, um, wanting to grow, um, in Sandy. And these are from your, your economic development strategy. Most of those are in manufacturing. Um, so your small-scale manufacturing, industrial businesses are going to need space, um, like in an existing building. If you had a business incubator, which you don't have, um, but if you had a business incubator, that can help grow, um, manufacturing. Some, uh, types of, uh, industries, some types of companies may want to develop a building on a small site. Um, what we've heard from the state is that a lot of inquiries, um, around manufacturing are for sites of, uh, five to fifteen acres in size. You might want, be looking at a little larger manufacturing site, um, like larger than fifteen acres. Sandy isn't the kind of place that I would imagine you would get like Tesla's gigawatt. Sandy isn't the kind of place that I would imagine you would get like Tesla's gigawatt um uh. Factory um that needs two hundred and fifty or three hundred or more acres um of of land. Um, you're off the beaten path enough, um, and Oregon has enough. Environmental policies um that uh that make it a little less attractive. For um certain types of ginormous um manufacturing uses. On commercial, um, we're looking at target industries of things like uh professional and technical services. Um, I'm still um enamored of Sandy Net and wish that I lived in Sandy where I could get that kind of internet. Um, that's gotta be attractive for people um who are considering working from home in those industries. Or small industries that are considering um locating out of the Portland area. Um, and maybe, maybe you've got some ski bums in there who who wanna be closer to Mount Hood. Um, services for visitors, services for residents, so your hotels, your restaurants, um, things that are experiences. Um, all of those kind of things are commercial um growth opportunity. So commercial businesses, a lot of them wanna ex- uh uh a space in an existing building um with other businesses. They might wanna space in a building that's dominated by one business, um, so if you imagine. Uh, a a large business and and two or three smaller ones in a building. Or you might be looking at land construction for a new building, generally speaking, we're looking at sites of one to to five acres. Um, and Sandy has those kind of sites. Um, so what we concluded is that Sandy, generally speaking, has a land base to meet um its economic development. Goals, the the biggest challenge is some of your industrial is uh in areas that are constrained. Um, uh, and so how do you manage your uh industrial land base better? Um, and what are the opportunities of these larger um uh commercial buildings, uh, commercial uh sites? Um, that I know the city has has looked at planning for um before. Um, so, so those are some of the the implications out of the E O A. Before I go on to the housing needs analysis, are there any questions? Okay. Then the housing capacity analysis. Uh, city does uh and housing capacity analysis for similar reasons, um, goal ten. Um, has legal requirements that are addressed addressed in the housing capacity analysis. And cities like Sandy have to update their housing capacity analysis now every eight years. This gives you a factual basis for updating your comprehensive plan. And this answers the question of whether Sandy has enough land to accommodate expected population growth. It'll also set you up um for discussions about um housing development and housing preservation. Um, in your housing production strategy, um, I won't be talking about those tonight. Um, but we'll be talking to you all about those more later on, um, after that project gets started. So looking at the buildable lands inventory, um, we started with all land. Where housing can be developed as an outright use, um, so this is just your comprehensive plan map. That shows um land where uh housing can be developed with uh as an outright use. Um, we looked at your constraints, um, here's a map that's actually showing the constraints. These are generally speaking, the same constraints that were used in the uh. Uh, in the economic opportunities analysis with a few little differences. Um, and then we said, okay, for your land, um, that is vacant and unconstrained. How much buildable land do you have and in what comprehensive plan designation? And in some cases, we look down at zones, um, do you have it? Well, you've got a really specific pattern. Of uh land, um, so it's all around the edges. So of course, you know, out here, out west, um, down here, down here, um, going out of town. Um, if I asked your uh uh your public works folks, um. Where there weren't services, um, they would probably be pointing to all of these places. Um, and so I'm sure that uh the moratorium is making development extra interesting um in Sandy. Um, and some of these areas, some of the reasons that they're they're not developed yet. Um, certainly, um, I'm sure are related to availability of of infrastructure and city services. Um, so that has some pretty big implications for how C and D it needs to address their housing needs over this next. Uh, eight-year, twenty-year period. So we're looking at seven hundred and seventy-one acres of uh land that is vacant, um, of the commercial land. We did not assume that all hundred and twenty-eight acres of commercial land um would be available for residential development, we assumed a fraction of that. And if you'd like to know what fraction of that we assumed, I would have to ask Nicole to look at it, cuz I I haven't looked at that for a little while. Um, but it was consistent um with what we'd seen in other places. Um, so a lot of that land um is in your low-density. Um, that uh comprehensive plan designation and a lot of that is zoned for S F R. Um, you don't have a lot of land that's vacant in your uh, your medium density or your high density. Um, you've got a little bit more in your village um and some of these plan designations. Um, but you don't have a lot of land um for uh medium and high-density housing, um. As we'll look at it, you've got just enough land um for some of these types of housing. So before I go on and start talking about uh uh types of housing, that kind of thing in the forecast. Do you have any questions about the buildable lands inventory? Okay. All right, so when you're looking at a um housing capacity analysis, you're looking at a wide range of housing. Um, and we've grouped them into four categories, single-family detached, single-family attached. Multi-family um with two to four units per structure, and then multifamily, um, which is typically. Multi-story, multi-family housing. Um, so as we talk about um each of these different types of housing, this is what they are. So when we look at your housing mix and how it's changed since twen- uh two thousand. Um, you've had a little more single-family detached growth than you have um other housing types. Um, so your 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 mix of housing has stayed a little bit stable. Um, uh, but with more growth of single-family detached and uh townhouses. Um, when we look at the types of housing that people live in by tenure. Ninety-three percent of people who are owners um live in single-family detached housing. A lot of the rest live in townhouses, this this isn't really surprising. I wouldn't expect to see a lot of uh um multi-dwelling unit. Um, ownership housing in a place like Sandy, um, and you don't have a lot of plexes. In uh in eight years, you might have seen more development of middle housing types like uh duplexes or quadplexes um over time. When we look at renters, it's a lot more mixed, so forty percent of your renter households. Live in single-family detached and forty-one percent live in multifamily. Well, when we look at your um share of multifamily, it accounts for ten percent of your housing stock. And so what that tells us is that you don't have a lot of multifamily, and that may be a barrier. To people who want to rent housing um living in Sandy. So median sales prices, um, this is about a year old, um, but. Um, we haven't seen uh the the same kind of run-up in sales prices um over the last year, and in fact, in some places, we saw some. Some decreases, um, but Sandy's housing prices were eh in line with uh um housing prices in other parts. Of Clackamas County, so um lower than Estacada, Oregon City, and certainly Happy Valley. Little higher than Gresham and Troutdale, um, at about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on average, and of course, that's a median. Sales price, so half or above, half or below. When we look at average asking rent, um, what we see is between two thousand fifteen and twenty-two. Um, the average asking rent increased by about four hundred and sixty-two dollars or forty-one percent. Um, over that uh period, so what we're seeing is your rents progressively increasing. We also saw your housing sales prices progressively increasing. So then when we look at this um and compare it to incomes, you come to the consideration of a cost burden. So a household that's paying thirty percent or more of their income um for housing costs are said to be cost-burdened. And housing costs in include things like rent and certain types of utilities. Um, uh, like uh heat and electricity, they also uh include mortgage mortgage. Interest, insurance, and those same types of utilities for owners. So about thirty-two percent of your households are cost-burdened in Sandy. And uh, that's lower than than some communities, like Gresham has a larger percent of households that are cost-burdened. Um, and higher than uh a place like Happy Valley, certainly, and some of that has to do with the different kinds of housing stru- uh. Housing in Gresham versus in Happy Valley. So then we're thinking about housing in the context. Of housing that's affordable at different income levels, cuz every household needs housing that's affordable. Um, so a household that earns Clackamas County's median family income for a household of four. That's earning a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, they can afford about twenty-eight hundred and sixty dollars a month. In monthly housing costs or in rent, and they could afford a a house worth up to about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, and of course, what they can afford um really changes when you've got uh increases in interest rates. Um, so we've seen a big increase in interest rates from twenty twenty um to twenty twenty-four, of course, and. Who knows exactly where interest rates are going and when they're going um uh down, hopefully. Um, but uh as interest rates um increase, it really impacts the amount of housing that people can buy. So your median sales price at uh four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you have to have a household income. Of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars um to afford that. Um, without being cost-burdened, so to afford the uh, to afford the loan essentially. I would expect some people, some households with Clackamas County housing, uh, sorry, Clackamas County median family income. Of a hundred and fourteen thousand can afford some of the less expensive housing. In Sandy, I'm just not sure that there's much of that less expensive housing in Sandy. When you look at uh households that have how um income above uh the average. These are the households can that can start to afford uh your median sales prices. When you look at households that have income between uh, say, a hundred and twenty and eighty percent of median family income. Um, what you see there is new housing developed um in that um income range is typically. Things like townhouses um or uh rental multifamily housing. So these households can certainly afford your uh your median monthly rents of eighteen hundred dollars a month. Um, but households that are below eighty percent of median family income, they start to be able, uh, they start to have trouble. Affording um those rents, and of course, a smaller number of people per household is going to have lower income. So once you get here, um, at below fifty percent of median family income. Housing that's newly developed um for uh this income category is typically um. Income uh restricted, government subsidized housing. Um, so uh every city I've worked in has need at that income level. And it's something that uh fulfilling that need is not something that the housing market does. Um, it's something that uh you have to work with um nonprofit housing providers um uh with state and federal funding. Um, so the city can have a role in uh getting that kind of housing built as well. Those are issues that we'll discuss in the housing production strategy. Ask for questions in just one moment, but as we look at uh uh incomes and percent of households in each of these groups. Um, what you see is the highest income group, it's twenty percent of Sandy's households. So not many households um in Sandy currently can afford that newly uh that that uh existing housing prices. Um, rather than even newly-built housing prices. Um, about half of your households have income that we'd consider low or middle-income households. And then um uh, a little over thirty percent have uh incomes that are. Uh, uh, what they can afford is generally income-restricted housing, some types of manufactured homes, especially older manufactured homes. And other housing that's in some way subsidized. Um, so I I would say that this is pretty typical of a lot of communities that I see across Oregon, the these kind of distributions. Are there any questions about this? Sort of rough housing market out there.
Yeah, I I did wanna say one additional thing, Beth, um, is that. You know, the these things that Beth is talking to are important things to kind of discuss and have a community conversation around, and and to be honest about the situation. Not just in Sandy and not just in Oregon, but housing in general.
Yep.
In addition to that, though, I wanna just make sure everybody understands, and we'll be reiterating this to council. Uh, based on the work session we had with them in, I think, early December, that a lot of these things also are just statutory obligations. That we have to go through this analysis, and that. Once we go through this analysis, the next step will then be the housing production strategy and trying to figure out some creative mechanisms to increase. Uh, housing ownership and affordability and all the other great things that we wanna see, I think, as a community. So I just, I just wanna make sure that everybody kind of understands that there's two things going on here. I think it's best practice to do this, but I also just wanna make sure everybody realizes this is also a statutory obligation.
Yep. Um, we're gonna walk through the the forecast of new housing in a moment and. I will take a moment to uh, I, it feels very much like bragging, um, but uh. Uh, we're generally acknowledged um within the state um by uh. Uh, by Department of Land Conservation and Development to have uh a robust approach. Um, to these sorts of issues and in meeting statutory requirements. So here we come to the statutory requirements. Um, uh, you're required to inventory um and plan for residential uses. Um, encourage the availability of adequate numbers, adequate's a kinda lukewarm word. Adequate numbers of needed housing units, and there's definitions of needed housing units. At price ranges and rent levels that are commensurate with the financial capability of Oregon households, of households in Sandy also. And allow for a flexibility of housing location type and density. So we're thinking about this as we're implementing the next steps. So we started with a a forecast of uh change in people in Sandy, this is from. Uh, Portland State University, it's the required um forecast of new housing, uh of new population growth. Um, that Portland State University does for the state, and they do this for every city, every U G B within the state. Um, over time, um, and we're looking at about sixty-three fifty new residents. Um, a growth rate of one point nine percent, and in the end, this is gonna result in about. Two thousand four hundred and twenty-four new dwelling units, and we come to that. Looking at Sandy's average household size and figuring out number of um occupied units. We're looking at a vacancy rate of five percent, so assuming that there is what we would call a healthy vacancy rate. In Sandy, that allows people to move around between housing, um, so eh when you. Vacate a house, um, there's another house to buy um or to rent. Um, so that adds a hundred and fifteen um additional dwelling units to the forecast, and that's how we come to. Two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dwelling units. On average, if the development happened in a linear way, that would be about a hundred and twenty-one units a year. Development does not happen in a linear way, you have spurts in different years. Um, and we've got information in uh your housing capacity analysis about how some years you had a lot and some years you had a little. And so then we think about, um, uh, what's going to affect future housing need, we look at demographic factors. Um, like the aging population, so older households. Um, at a certain point, they have lower incomes, they also have fewer persons per household. Um, growth in families with children, that's of course a a a big uh group in Sandy and an important group for Sandy. Growth of your Latino population, which we have seen Sandy as well as the rest of the state become more um ethnically diverse. Latino households on average tend to be larger household sizes, in part because they're more likely to have children. Um, and also in part because uh uh Latino households are more likely to be multi-generational. Um, so these demographic factors, they they tell us we're gonna need more small units. And we're going to need more family units, and not all small units are going to be multifamily. And not all family units um are going to be single fam- uh, single-family. Um, it all depends on what people can afford, and as you could see, a lot of your households can't necessarily afford the cost of single-family housing. You have housing prices um that are outpacing uh incomes. That's pointing us towards more housing that's affordable at your middle and your lower-income households. That's pointing us towards more housing that's affordable at your middle and your lower income households. Um and of course, um affordability concerns, particularly for younger people who are trying to get into housing. And as I mentioned, um the recent increases in uh uh um in interest rates have made it even harder. For young people to get into uh into housing. So the implication is about a broader range of housing types with a right wider range of price points, so some more rental housing. Um as well as um more diverse ownership housing opportunities is really what we're seeing and. This is what we're seeing across Oregon, um and this is a. Uh uh I would say our our state mandates are in part responsive to this and responsive. To the fact that the housing market just isn't working well enough for a lot of people. So then we forecast um growth um uh of housing um that twenty-four twenty-four new units by housing type. So we're taking those things that we just talked about into consideration as we're required to um by state statutes. What we assumed is that the mix of new housing would build upon the mix of housing in Sandy's existing urbanization study from two thousand fifteen. It's the one that's currently adopted. And so that's how we got to sixty percent of new housing would be um single-family detached. Uh twenty-eight percent would be multi-unit and the rest would be the the middle housing types in between. Your townhouses, your duplexes, your triplexes, your quadplexes. Um so that's how we got to that mix of uh mix of housing types. Um in looking at assumed densities, there's a lot to talk about here if we wanted to. But the short answer is we look at what's um allowed in each uh in each zone. And assume that about uh that that not uh all zones will not build out to their maximum density. Because uh 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 parcels are irregularly shaped and you can hardly ever build out to your maximum density. And then we assume that's how we got our average net density. Then we assumed um land for rights of way, so for your your roads, your sidewalks, your curbs and gutters. That's based on what you already have within the community, and that's how we came to our our gross density assumptions. Before I go on, does anybody want me to talk about those uh density assumptions more? Feel like I'll put y'all asleep before if I did that. All right.
I have a question. Um. When we talked about medium family income.
Mm-hmm.
And we found that there was a lot less. Availability for the lower end, we and we keep bringing up the phrase affordable housing, which. I hate that term, but uh. And then we talked about this or the this the slide, I think after this or a couple after this, where you talk about. Um, right, go back one. The other way. With the sixty percent, yeah, new units. So now we're talking about putting a bulk of the new units.
Yep.
The majority. Out of reach, so when we're talking about affordable housing, or the people that can't afford it, or the the medium incomes um reality. And now we're talking about creating. The majority. That's unattainable. Um wouldn't it be kind of a switch, wouldn't it be kind of like? Completely reversed upside down to say we need sixty percent more units that fit into the medium. Family income, rather than the majority that are well beyond anybody that can afford it.
I could make that case, Patrick. But uh. The state doesn't require that. And I don't, the state doesn't require that yet. Um the state will require that the next time you're looking at a housing capacity analysis. Um and uh in talking to staff, it didn't seem like that was politically feasible. Um but.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that too, uh but I I'm just, I'm just saying per statistic wise, you know.
Yeah, if you were going strictly by affordability, um uh you would forecast maybe. I don't know, somewhere somewhere a little above twenty percent. Of uh new housing would be single-family detached, because of course, single-family detached includes small units. Um like uh like cottage housing, um manufactured housing, um that kind of thing. So maybe maybe twenty to thirty percent um just based on uh income levels. There's more nuance to it than that, but yeah, you you could easily make that that um argument.
Yeah, or the the attached being a little bit higher too, because um. Obviously, density brings down the the price of the house.
And the size of units.
The size of you.
Yeah.
That three hundred and forty to three hundred and seventy instead of four fifty-five or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um type of thing, so yeah, that's where I, I mean, I thought that was pretty obvious with this, but. I mean, and I understand the political climate, Sandy, but um.
Political cl- climate in a lot of uh cities um the size of Sandy, yeah, which I I know, no, because we worked in another city like that.
And the ongoing discussion of affordable housing and and finding more availability of housing. Um in migratory areas. The state is is still kind of set on this, is that what I was getting from you, like kind of your first?
This is going to choose, uh uh the state is revising how it does housing capacity analysis and the methodology for doing that. And so that methodology will be set later on this year and will apply to housing capacity analysis in the future. Um but that's that's not the case for right now. Um.
And would it, would a city be, so this is showing something that um. Again, factual basis for how we're gonna go forward. Um, could we get some conflict in our housing production strategy? Of how we want to address this, are we gonna be in co- uh could we come into some type of conflict?
No, this the state is acknowledging that cities um that were already substantially into their housing capacity analysis. Um uh can finish it up um as long as they adopt by. I think it's twenty twenty-six, it could be twenty twenty, I think it's twenty twenty-six. So um and the state doesn't hold uh the city um. Responsible for new rules that'll be in place also for housing capacity analysis um in in about a year from now. Um so so this is uh an opportunity for Sandy to start looking at at housing. Um uh opportu- um housing in in some different ways, um and in eight years from now, the city will be required to look at it. Um in more different ways.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So. So we take those density assumptions, um and we apply them to your vacant land. So your S F R um in low density, you've got four hundred and eighteen acres of it. At three point seven dwelling units per gross acre, that's about capacity for a thousand uh five hundred and forty-five additional dwelling units. It's it's pretty simple multiplication there. Um and that's how we come to a capacity of about thirty-five hundred dwelling units um on your vacant land. Um and you see that we only assumed that nineteen acres of your commercial land in C two um would develop with housing. Um more uh more, of course, uh commercial land could develop with housing. Um and then when we look at your land sufficiency, what we come to is the conclusion. That you have a surplus of uh capacity. In uh certainly in your low density, your medium density is really close, your high density is really close. Your village is is kind of close, um but almost all of your um. Uh surplus capacity is in your S F R um in low density. If you remember in December, um we talked about there being a deficit of uh of capacity of like seventy dwelling units in your R two zone. Um in Village. And what we heard was the village wasn't really behaving, um it really wasn't producing in quite the way. That it was expected to, and so there was less interest in in potentially expanding. Um the village, so we reallocated that housing to other uh zones and plan designations. Um because you had um some amount of uh of slack in other places. Um so that's why you're not seeing a deficit at this point. Um but you know, aside from your S F R, you're really pretty close on capacity in all of your other um uh areas. Um the place that you might have uh more capacity, depending on how commercial development happens, um is is in your commercial. Um and that's for for market rate housing, um as well as you could see some some income restricted affordable housing um in your C tail. Um a lot of places are getting more and more multifamily that's market rate housing um in uh commercial areas. Um I'm not sure that that's hit Sandy in quite the same way, but I expect to see uh uh that continue to happen. Um especially as we have some change um in what's happening in our commercial areas. Um so in other words, um uh less demand at this point and probably for the next few years for office commercial, for instance. Um and for some places, um uh that's that's done a lot for them, you know, getting some some housing into their downtown does a lot. Um for uh businesses in downtown, because you have more customers nearby. Um who can just, you know, walk down the street and and go out to dinner. So those are some interesting opportunities. Um and then I go on to the uh uh to the uh schedule. Um but I'd like to ask you all if you have any questions. Does it make sense to you what we're doing basically? Sort of the steps.
One other, one other thing I was gonna mention too is with that readjustment in the allocation of housing out of the village. One other thing that came up is that with the existing moratorium and. Uh the likelihood for it to continue, at least in a similar uh. It's gonna, it it's gonna be in a similar fashion for at least the foreseeable future as far as. We're probably not going to want zone changes and comprehensive map changes. That would have created a a very difficult obstacle for the city. Um because we have to adopt this H C A by statute. But our moratorium also does not allow for comprehensive planner or zoning map changes, so. Uh there'd have been no way of really accommodating that through a zone change.
That is true. So then my last slide is just making the point that um here we are in twenty twenty-four um in adoption and hearings. Um so I'll should hand it back to you, Kelly, unless anybody has questions.
Yeah, I was I was just gonna say with that, um also in your packet tonight, I think, I believe I included. Uh findings and a draft ordinance, I believe, um. Which were both put together by Patrick, so I just want to thank Patrick for putting together all those. Findings and the draft ordinances, um we just wanted to present them to you. So that you're aware of what will be brought forth uh to City Council, since you're recommending. Uh not only if the E O A and H C A should move forward, but. We thought you'd also be recommending um i- if you see anything in those findings or in the ordinance that need to be modified. Uh the ordinance and finding, the two ordinances and findings that Patrick put together were reviewed by our city attorney. Um so we do believe they're pretty solid um from also from a legal perspective. Uh but if you do see anything in those documents, uh in addition to the E O A and the H C A itself, we would like that input tonight. Um as part of your recommendation to the City Council. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chair.
All right, thanks, Kelly, um we'll go ahead and open it up to uh public testimony for anybody who may be listening, um. I don't think there's anybody left, but just in case somebody's adding, uh we'll go ahead and go over some guidelines, please try to avoid repetition. Someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it's sufficient to state that you agree with that person, uh even if that's all you say. Uh if you have documents, master letters that you wish to be considered by the hearing body, they must formally be placed. In the record of this proceeding to do that, either before or after you speak, email them to uh planning at Sandy, you're at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. Uh so staff can take care of them. Um I'm gonna go ahead and call an audible and just say if you have testimony, uh go ahead and click the raise hand button. Um and wait to be recognized, if you're on the phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Uh any of our uh many attendees wish directly recognized, Kelly?
Uh yeah, you don't have any still, so.
Excellent, all right, with that, I'll turn it back over to you for uh you know, a good recap on what we just heard.
Yeah, I would, I I would just suggest that um the Planning Commission probably close the hearing and then move to conversation and. Let Beth, Patrick and myself, Beth, uh Nicole, Patrick and myself know about any. Thing that you're confused about or that you think needs to be modified, um then provide that feedback to us. And then after that, I would recommend making a motion for City Council.
Perfect, so first up, uh looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I will second that move.
All right, uh we have a motion by Commissioner Crosby and the second from Commissioner Ramsay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All passed. Motion passes, uh any discussion questions that we didn't already get to? Anything anybody would like to say?
I just, I just had a couple of things, and first of all, and maybe the rest of you feel the same way, but. Um compliments to the writers of these reports. They are very well written, they were easy to follow. Um, people who write traffic studies could take some lessons from you. Uh but I I just thought they were very well written. Um, a couple of observations that I had. And and some have already been answered, but uh there was in the, I think in the economic one. There was reference to the West Sandy Concept Plan. Maybe I'm supposed to know what that is, but I hadn't heard of it before.
That was a um. How do I want to phrase this? That was a planning effort led by our former city manager, um it's also been referred to as the Old Barn District. Um and it was an effort that. I'll just say, uh. The individual that was leading that effort didn't choose to. Um get input from Planning Commission to the degree that I would have liked to have seen. Um I think the only work session on it went straight to the City Council. Um. Which, in my opinion, is not really best practice when you're doing master planning for a city, not to get Planning Commission input more heavily. Um but since that was presented to the Planning Commission, or I mean, I'm sorry, to the City Council. I do not believe we were given any direction to continue um. Putting to other concept plan any further, although. Um if you would be interested in learning more about it, I would be happy to try to present it to the best of my ability. Um at a future uh Planning Commission meeting and kind of walk you through what was analyzed by the consultant that the city manager hired. And um from there, you could give input to the City Council if you so choose on promoting it or saying, yeah, let's not go any further with this.
I have no desire to.
I was just trying to give you a little bit of backstory there.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate it, um. The other thing, since this is still perhaps in a draft um mode, there's reference. Um well, well, since since this was written, the three sixty-second extension has been done. The report referred to it as being something in the future. So that could probably be tweaked to make it um more current. And I think there was one place, and I don't know where it was, it was early on in my reading. Where uh H N A was still used, it hadn't been fi- find and replaced. I don't know where it is, but it's there somewhere.
Commissioner, do you know if that was in the document itself that was produced by ECO or in our staff report and findings, or do you remember?
I believe it was in the um the reports from ECO.
Uh a quick search or a quick find in uh the meeting packet shows it to be in the staff report.
Oh, okay. I couldn't do a search on the P D F or didn't go to the work to try it.
So there could also be another, but the one that's showing up for me is any staff report.
I didn't find one in the housing capacity analysis, so.
Okay, thank you, Pa- Patrick and I. Okay, thank you, Pat- Patrick and I will take a closer look at that before this goes to the council, appreciate that feedback.
And uh i- if it's desired, we can update the E O A um with the two pieces. Um, that the commissioner just commented on as well.
Uh, Commissioner Wimper.
Yes, this is uh just a point of information. I was trying to find in the document how many acres are in the new land that is accessible from. Bell and three sixty-second for commercial, is there a number of commercial acres that are in that area? That's something you could just send me an email about later if you'd like, if it's not something that comes to mind.
I think it might have been in that West Sandy Plan, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to look tomorrow and see if I have information on that, if not, if not, I'll ask ECO for assistance on that, um. But we, we can try to get something to the entire commission on that.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, anyone else? Yeah, I'll just echo what Commissioner Crosby said, um, I don't know if it's because I've. Uh, heard most of this three or four times after watching council meetings and attending uh. Economic Development Advisory Board as well, uh, but I did find it super easy to read, um. And understandable, so thank you for the explanation that's put in there, um, it makes going through it much easier. Uh, with that, I am, will look for a motion to recommend a council approval. Um, along with, um, let's see here, it is. Uh, the council approval along with a recommended approval to city council.
I can go ahead and make that motion, um. I would uh make the motion that we um. Recommend that these two reports along with the staff report be forwarded to with with a couple of the little changes that they want to make them. Forwarded to soon to city council with our approval, recommendation for their approval.
I will second that motion.
Alright, once again, we have a motion by Commissioner Crosby and a second by Commissioner Ramsayer, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Wow, we're doing good, seven forty-six here, uh, if anybody else, uh, unless anybody else has anything else, uh, I believe we can move for adjournment here. Great, uh, thank you all and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.